And they have a bi-weekly meeting. Do we have anyone from Archive that can update us on the status? It seems to be like a no. Then we have D Work PBL workgroup with a bi-weekly meeting on Wednesday at 1 UTC. Tivo, can we get something about that?
Yeah, so last time we finished up looking at the content and we are in finalization step. Actually, today was the deadline to push in latest changes for the like the onboarding material or technically the back building background knowledge material, so few lessons. And by the next week, I will finalize few of them. And in the meeting, we will basically do the final check out how it looks on the website. And in the meantime, also planning the going live like live with the website itself. So that more audience can check it other than just joining meetings and looking at the video summaries of meetings or pictures. Um, if the next meeting happens next week, so yeah, stay tuned slowly coming together and then we will pick up new items, so more skilled activities we do on Tivir, for example, activity lists, summaries, bundle tasks or anything you are using quite differently than like normally. And or like you systemized your Tivir, so this is a place to kind of share that model or method. And then next week we will pick up who will do what and what kind of lesson they bring on the table. And once that cycle is also completed, well, then we have our full onboarding from onboarding to contribution regarding how to use Tivir.
Great. Um, on a similar note, we have Process Modeling Workshop, Wednesday, 3 UTC. And we already got a little bit about what's happening in there, but Tivo, if you want to add something?
No, yeah, I think I covered everything.
That's great. Um, right after that, we have Strategy and Incubation. Well, last week we didn't have an incubation meeting, but we did have a discussion on strategy. That was mainly ethics, but perhaps Tommy Hedelf can give us a little bit of recapitulation on that?
Um, yeah, so if I can share the screen, I think I can, someone else is screening. Never mind, I'll just handle it by voice. We had a meeting in Strategy about ethics and it was a two-hour meeting. There were about five or six of us involved in that. It was open to everybody and it was in the Ambassador Events channel as it will be again this Wednesday at noon Eastern time or 5 U S T, UTC, I'm sorry. And we had a wide-ranging conversation, very interesting, some passionate. And we went to left field, right field, and we came back around the term of ethics. What are ethics within the Singularity Net ecosystem? So we've, we, we have four initiatives or action items that came out of the first discussion. And one is to define the term leader. What does that mean within SNET use and decentralization? Second is a regular monthly quarterly meeting for guilds to justify their build, their budget and production, sort of out there a little bit, an outlier for, for ethics, but it's there. Start a concise ethics doc based on a combo of Discord channel rules. That was posted. If you look in the Strategy channel, you'll see a Google docs to that. And what I hope to accomplish, what we hope to accomplish out of Town Hall today is to initiate a wider ambassador conversation on this initiative. I'd really like to expand it greatly and I'm probably, I've been asked to do this in the next deep funding round, which is going on. Everybody should be aware of the 1.5 million dollars that Deep Funding, an initiative out of Singularity Net and the Ambassador program is, is trying to give away for AI-related projects, but not only AI-related projects, marketing and ideation among other things. But I want to hold an Ethics After Town Hall or a breakout town room. What about AI ethics? As we're in AI AGI network, what do we do about ethics towards Sophia, Desmona and any of other AI things? How do we use ChatGPT? It's kind of a bigger, broader conversation, but the ethics in the Ambassador program is, is point. So I'd appreciate if you could all join me Wednesday in the Ambassador Events channel in Discord. There should be an event link put up, if not, pretty soon. So that's about all I have. Rojo, thank you.
Thanks a lot for the, for the update. I see Fly's hands. Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, man, thanks, dude. I'll just dovetail from what Hedelf was saying. Incubation will be back this week at 19 UTC. And it aligns so perfectly. A couple of weeks ago, I was talking to a woman called Anna Chpidinsky. She's focusing on AI and ethics. So she will be coming in as a featured guest on tomorrow's incubation. So if you would like to prepare Hedelf questions from the Ambassador program, we can fire them straight over to her during incubation tomorrow. Looking forward to see you there. Yeah.
That's great. That's like when the stars align, basically. So yeah, it's great. We have, after that, Treasury Guild, Thursdays, 3:30 PM UTC. And I would refer to Tivo for that.
And here also updates that Treasury Guild is now bi-weekly. So it will not happen this week. However, next week will be also replaced with a governance event called Crossroad Governance Community Forum. And in that call, this is collaboration with Governance Guild. And there will be a breakout room for Singularity Net where we also look how cross-communities could share their problems and have some hack solution for each other. So because we are in different levels when we look at the same communities, we are building stuff, but our issues may be different and some have kind of already have existing issue that may be solved in other places. So it's nice to have this place where the community builders can share their practices. And so the next Treasury Guild meeting will happen on 7 September, where we will also most likely start discussing how do we budget our next and final quarter budget of this year.
That's great. Looking forward to the conversations around that. Moving then, I guess the next step would be onboarding. That's also in Thursday, 1 PM UTC. And if Sukran is here, perhaps she can give us a little update?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I actually had the meeting. Last Thursday, we discussed the onboarding session, which we are planning to have in early September. We discussed the documents, tried to put everything in order. And also we talked about getting started channel, how we could make improvements on it. So we'll continue discussions on it this coming Thursday at the same time.
That's cool. Um, again, if there's anyone who have perhaps some suggestions or some comments about the getting started, getting started channel. I believe there is a public document out there or you can just shoot out some messages in the general chat channel. Yeah, just express your, basically your comments. I mean, if you have any comments about the whole looks of it or if you want to add something. Next, we have AI Sandbox and that would be Fly. Do we have any updates?
Yeah, AI Sandbox is going to be restarted again, probably in September. Partly because of the summer break, there's been a bit less engagement. And however, there are still like messages and conversations, links being posted on the AI Sandbox. So hopefully we're going to start up the AI Sandbox when people are a bit back from holidays and there's some async discussions on the AI Sandbox. So probably from the start of September, it will be happening again.
Um, there is a message on my screen that says Hedelf is requesting a remote control of your screen. And I don't think Hedelf is actually requesting that. So.
No, brother, I am not. Do not give it.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. But yeah, anyway. Next step, Writers' Work Group. Kenichi, are you with us? Um, no. Was someone else in the? Was someone else in the meeting? Perhaps they can give us some update? Now I'm getting even a funnier message. Guillermo Lucero Funes is requesting remote control of your screen. That's very funny. Someone is being funny. All right, then we can move to the Video Work Group update. I guess I can give that update. Last week we have talked about basically some, well, first thing, which is something we do weekly is talk about the, what's going on with the social media, the growth of the social media, if everything is good. And then right after that, well, we started talking about like next videos that were going to be made. Like there was a video in Spanish about deep funding that Agus has expressed that he wanted to, to make basically to open up like the process to Spanish-speaking communities. And then also we were talking about the new clips that came out of the community from, from last week that we voted, voted about. And yeah, we, we talked a little bit about like future plans, just having new content and keeping up basically the rolling content as we go because I believe as we speak, we're publishing one clip every day, which is not an easy thing to do. So we have to keep rolling content basically. And yeah, that's about it for Video Work Group. Yeah, I also today made a little website for Video Work Group. You can share it with everyone. It's just to, to basically get all the content that one might need about the Video Work Group in one place. And it's like a one-page kind of website. Let me share it.
Just need to allocate Video Work Group in the bottom left.
The War Group.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
War Group. Wow.
War Group. That's even better. But yeah, you have the Twitter, Instagram, TikTok, weekly meeting link, D Work Tag, Voting on Crystal, Content Folder, blah, blah, blah. So yeah, it's like if, if someone is coming in for the first time in the Video Work Group, you want to give them like this one place where they just have everything. And you don't have to keep, you know, like sending them new links and stuff like that. Yes. Sukran, can you speak?
Yes, I can. Well, I'm on transit, so might be a little bit points.
Thank you. I just had to remove the intruder, so they, they changed their name to yours. So.
Yeah, I saw that.
I think I kicked out the intruder, hopefully. Uh, thank you, Sukran. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. All right, cool. Next thing would be, do we still have, oh yeah, educational, well. One second. Why is this not moving? Sorry for the technical difficulty. So last one is Educational Work Group and that would be Monday. I don't know if Hedelf would like to go for it or maybe Walter. We didn't hear from Walter. I don't know.
Yeah, let, let's hear from Walter because Walter wants to also talk about something else, the forum channel. So go ahead, Walter, if you don't mind.
Sure. So first, just a quick announcement. There is now a dedicated channel in a forum format, meaning that people can make posts and then others can comment. So it's a lightweight method of maintaining a conversation on a, you know, topic of interest. I primed the pump with basically like a couple of pending questions. One is basically team cohesion, which is conflict resolution by another name. And then, so basically take a look, I'd like to invite everybody at the minimum to go in and check that you have access because there have been some Discord versioning questions on that. And beyond, I personally intend to use it as a free-form way of expression that within some understanding of being professional and civil things can get discussed that are not just limited to the specific business of a particular sub-unit. And I'll post the link shortly.
Nice, man. Sounds great. Good job.
Uh, how about the Educational Work Group meeting? We did talk about some, I don't know if you want to talk about that, Walter, perhaps?
Not, not aware of the unit of the education unit. It's kind of like my whole two weeks here. It's been in limbo. So I don't know that, yeah, but that unit is still chugging along. We definitely want to work on education.
What I was referring to is the meeting we had Walter and I and, and Hedelf. So the three of us had this meeting where we were talking about having a proposal for deep funding. So that was an Educational Guild meeting, actually.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. I didn't realize it was under that auspices. I thought it was more deep-funding focused rather than the Education Guild. I guess I never knew what the Education Guild Charter is.
I see, I see. Well, yeah, Education Guild really started with a nice spark and kind of started dying out bit by bit, but we're trying to revive it. I think it's a very important workgroup just because we don't want to, we, we don't want to just talk about, I mean, the, the general information, which is like what a lot of people are asking about. Oh, when is the price going up of a certain token? What's going to happen to this and that? You want to educate the community as well and just let them know what's happening and all these kinds of things. So.
On that note, I would love to post a link. I just sent it in the chat for everyone. This is a part of on the deep funding portal that I made a little while ago. Self-organization toolkit or the Cybernetic Playbook. Love if anyone wants to feedback, to comment on it, to help improve or to vote on it would be amazing. There's a bucket for some tasks for the Ambassador program that we can like help, uh, help you guys, the community, us to kind of professionalize these skills that we're developing. So welcome, welcome, welcome. That's it.
Very nice. Perhaps, yeah, I mean, you have the link. You want to get some feedback. I mean, if you want to give some feedback, that would be great. We're looking forward to that. Um, I believe the next step will be to talk about ethics. Right? Ethics in the Ambassador program. And I will throw the ball to Hedelf.
Okay, that is beautiful. I touched on it a little base a little bit earlier. If you could, let me find it. I had it up before, but if you could give me a minute to find, there's the sheet. If you could, let me share my screen. Stop sharing your screen and I don't want to take over your screen. But if you, you let me start sharing, I will put up the conversation that we had. Okay. Can you see my document?
Yes.
Okay, so this was the convo over some incidents that may, let me step back. In May, the Ambassador program was a year old. We had focused pretty much on internal organization, getting a structure. And we are now coming to some of the meteor subjects of a, any organization, especially in AI AGI decentralized web three. And, and we're looking at constitution, we're looking at governance. And we're looking at ethics, which is, is probably one, in my opinion, one of the more important things. And one of the trickier things to handle because you're talking about your, the individual person that you deal with day to day. How do you call somebody out for being unethical? What is ethical? What is unethical? It's not necessarily a binary concept. So in, in the meeting, we had Kenrick, Ian, Psychonaut Guy, Rojo, Sugar and Spice, Mayor DeFi, Devin, Micolai and myself as facilitator. And we, we had a very wide-ranging conversation. We went all over the place. And Kenrick stated that there were four roles required is, is one of the first, some guidelines that is needed in a meeting. And we're, we're a small, very lean organization. And some workgroups, guilds don't necessarily get four people. But he wanted a facilitator, which is Rojo today, a secretary, which takes notes in minutes. And we do have chat and AI bot taking notes. Also, some of us take them old-fashioned. A representative, which would be an elected position to represent the constituency. And, and a leader elected with a side note that an effective leader is one who serves. And, and there's been some angst about this term leader by some members of Singularity Net. Some feel strongly that leader is a good word. Some feel strongly that leader is not necessarily a good word. Rojo cited the American Constitution about checks and balances and indicated that we have a need for it. Become an, it became an action item. We, we felt it was a good thing to have a monthly or quarterly meeting on a longer than normal call such as this Town Hall, where all workgroup and guild leaders would basically justify their fund requests and their budget expenditures. Walter brought up that the SNETs were part of a larger organization, which we are. There's a whole ecosystem that the Ambassador cadre is, is involved with. And we're just a small part of it. We also have the foundation. We have the council. We're working on, for those of you that are aware of it or not aware of it, we're working on a DAO initially called, will be called SingCom DAO or Seed SingCom DAO because it'll be a six, nine-month temporary organization to develop and form the SingCom DAO, which will take in the whole ecosystem. And we went around and around. It was a very, very lively conversation. This document is in the Strategy Guild. I won't bore you by pasting it up here. Go look for it if you want to get involved. But we did come up with four action items and I'd like to open it up for a little bit of conversation. Leader, we need a term for what a leader is for SNET use. In, in Rojo's strict culture, a leader, and to paraphrase his wording, a leader is chosen and is opposite of a dictator. It has a good connotation. To some, leader is a politician or. Oh, man, I was just getting into the music.
Sorry, I ruined it for you.
The, the other action item, as I mentioned, was a regular meeting for guilds to justify expenditures in a check and balance system. We want to start and I have it posted and again, you can find it in the Strategy and a couple of other channels. A ethics doc. And we agreed in the initial meeting to scrape Discord channels for their ethic rules. As you, you probably remember, every room you go into, every channel you go into new, you have to agree to a set of rules. And we started, I started a document that scraped off a bunch of channels, including Singularity Nets, the Ape Society and a few of the other larger ones. And essentially the most important rule that comes down over and over again is be nice to your fellow person, your colleague. Be nice. But we need to have a concise document that everybody agrees to, can be a fair, equitable and just ethics document. And probably more important, we need to have a way of handling ethics violations. What do we do? That's a bigger conversation. We're just starting to get there. That's a bigger conversation. We're just starting to get there. Uh, and this initiate the action item, initiate a wider ambassador conversation on this initiative. Um, that's what, that's what this is right now. So, uh, I'm done with the document. You have the four items. Uh, the most important one is the people in the room today, uh, start discussing ethics, what an ethics document is, perhaps what leader is, and where do we, where do you as a community, where do you think we should go? Um, so I opened the floor up. Um, we take all comments. As long as the comments and the opinions, remember, your opinion is 100% correct. It is your opinion. When you share it with your colleagues, us in the room, do so respectfully. If you disagree with someone's opinion, please do so with humility and do so with respect. Uh, as I said, the number one item in all of the channels that I came across basically comes down to be nice to your fellow person. So let's open it up, throw out what you want. This is a spitball type of meeting. If someone's talking, don't talk over them. If you wanna raise your hand, uh, I'll try to recognize you in order, but if you wanna just step up and talk, do so. Don't talk over somebody else, please. Thank you. Okay. There you go. It's a hard topic, or, or no one has thoughts on ethics. Go ahead, Tevo.
Yeah, my thoughts. I guess I got a bit also stuck in the thought when you mentioned about, uh, leadership and the word meaning on that and then going over the summary. And I also sometimes feel that this leadership thing shouldn't be something that you're like individually striving for, but it should be a collective kind of representation. And that, uh, the more, yeah, people lead or the more impact there is behind, the, the better leadership there is. And instead of, uh, like selecting people. Um, so yeah, that's the only thing where I feel like it's, it, the, this kind of system is not yet used enough. Like, everybody still assumes that structure first is the way to go, and it's easier to implement. And after that, it gets like, you can't really turn back from there usually.
Excellent, excellent points. Um, I think most people in the world are raised with structure. Um, I had a mother and father, fortunately, and, uh, it was a very hierarchical, uh, family unit, um, and it was structure. You know, you had to say your prayers, you had to brush your teeth, you had to uh, get a bedtime story, you had to go to school, whatever it was, i- it was structured. And I think as we grow, um, we, we go into school and there's structure. There's always the teacher, and above the teacher, there's the principal, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I think no matter what part of the world, and I only really know the American and the Chinese system. I've spent a little time in Europe. But, uh, most parts of the world were, were structured to be in a structured society. So, Tevo, yeah, it's, it's, it's easier and it's hard to go back from. I like Felix's, uh, definition that, um, and, and it re- reminded me of, um, a movie I saw. It, it was about a queen. And, um, uh, basically what he said is a leader is someone that is there to serve. And the queen, her definition of being a queen was, I'm here to serve my people. Fly, your hand is up. Please go.
Yeah, I just wanted to share some thoughts that it always becomes a bit difficult, the conversation about, uh, leadership in abstract form. But actually, uh, I think for me, it's important to remember that this term leadership is only talking about a, a group of people who lead something. It's for me, key, if you have a leader and they're not leading on anything, then it's pretty simple. It's just, uh, it's pretty clear what's happening. But, um, as it is in the community, it's kind of always applied, whether that be to a workgroup guild, to processes, or facilitating, starting conversations, or asking hard questions. Yeah. So I think it, it's just, it can be an endless, uh, conversation, um, about leadership, leaders, uh. But I guess it helps me to kind of really apply it to, and within this group of leaders, there are naturally specializations. One is but going to be leading on different things than the others. Um, but what's the minimum viable, like, agreement that we can come to, that we, uh, understand? That we can just talk about these things without having friction or abrasion.
Wow, wow, some profound thoughts there. Um, friction and abrasion over a term. Uh, I, I, my, my first degree was a long time ago. I don't even wanna tell you what year I graduated, uh, with my environmental chemistry degree, but it was a long time ago. It, it was about the time the internet was born. And then I went back to, um, work on my, an- another bachelor's degree and a master's degree. And I, I, I was profoundly surprised when the instructor had to come in and say, hey, there's trigger words here. And I didn't know what the hell the, the, the instructor was talking about. And then I start seeing on, on movies, um, there's smoking, and that may be a trigger. And I was talking to a young coed, and she says, oh, yes, well, you know, you may have a trigger with rage, so you gotta, the instructor has to warn us. And I, I realized I was, uh, I was really an old fart at that point. I don't understand, um, I truly don't understand the, the, the friction over the terminology of what a word may mean. And I, I grew up in the old school, sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never harm me. So whether something's called a, a, a leader, or, um, a, a, an ambassador, or the dojo, uh, or the, the sensei, it all essentially to me, and this is my take on it, means the same thing. So I don't get where people have time in their life to have friction over, uh, what a word means. Now, how it's applied is, is a totally different story, and we've seen that through history. Um, certain words are applied in a certain way, uh, that hurt and, and have derogatory meanings. I've, I've never heard of leader being a, uh, hurtful or derogatory, um, phrase, but that's, that's me. Um, so, any other thoughts?
Maybe not other thoughts for other people, but, uh, on the same, on, on top of what, uh, was shared previously. I think, yes, to think about this, I'm, I'm also a bit of a functional person. Even if I don't agree with the words or the taxonomy, I'm right now, okay, let's just go with it. Until we have, like, data and experience using this stuff or these terminologies and methodologies. And once I have actually used it, tried it, so, seen it, then I'm feel more in a position to say, hey, let's not try it again because of reasons I cannot fit. Um, although I do understand the need of terminology, I, there was, I don't know, last year or somewhere, like, uh, a very good discussions about how to be communicating, how the word grabs meaning to, from one context to another, and how much you can grab attention with some words and with some less. And so it's, it's also like a, a different world out there. If you can kind of go into this lexicon of words to use. Um, so I won't put down too, like, so dismissively that the words don't matter. But in, in situations like, I feel like we are right now, I would rather be more practical and think about the concepts, what we try to bring forward and worry about the words a bit. At like a version two or a different version above the line where we have more experience and, and mass behind what that actually should be.
That, that is fair and a, and a, and a very good point, and I, I understand, uh, the contextual use of it. Uh, but, but let me ask you a question. We're in Web three. Um, most of you, not that it really matters a lot, but are younger than me and have different experiences, and we really are. Um, and, and it amazes me in SNET how diverse and global we are. Um, I know we have two ambassadors from Africa, to, uh, one from England, or two from England, um, two from the US. We, we have, uh, a Moroccan here. We have, we have people from all over the world. Uh, different languages, uh, different upbringings, different family settings. Um, and yet we all manage, for the most part, to communicate respectfully. So whether it's a word or not. Who, um, is, and, and let me take a, 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 just a quick consensus by thumbs up, thumbs down. Who thinks, uh, the terminology of leader in Web three is acceptable? Is it an acceptable term to use, or should we go somewhere else? Thumbs up if you think it's acceptable. Thumbs down if you don't. And I see nothing but thumbs up. Okay. Um, I have not seen any thumbs down. And, and because you're, uh, most of you are younger and Web three is going to be your future, why is it not acceptable if you don't think it's acceptable? So far, everybody's thumbs up, and I'm a thumbs up, so. I'm not seeing anybody. So, to me, on a consensus basis, leader is an acceptable term to use in Singularity Net. That would be, uh, a statement that I come out of this. We have, uh, nine minutes left for this meeting, so I would like to leave the terminal, the term of leader and go to actual ethics. What do you think anybody is the single most important thing, statement, phrase, or word that should be in a SNET ethics statement? And, and I'd really like to hear quickly from everybody in the room.
I don't know where I heard it before, but, uh, somebody used slogan, do no harm. That's. Think about what you're.
Yeah, that's some old Greek guy, I think. Um, was he Greek or was he? I think it was Greek Hippocra- Hippocratic, the Hippocratic oath, do no harm to your patient. Anybody else? Great term. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, it's interesting with that, because, uh, if you take euthanasia, for instance, like, uh, and how does that, how does that affect the, the Hippocratic oath to, to not do harm on your, uh, on your patient? Well, if, if the, if the way to do no harm is to put that person out of their misery, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's starting to be legal in many countries now.
Well, Fly, that is, um, that's profound, and that's a just whole discussion into itself. And Fly does ask if there's any questions, uh, for tomorrow, uh, for their expert, Anna Chibinajee, I, I probably butchered it. Um, one of my favorite, uh, books is, uh, from a child, and I used to read a lot of stuff is, um, Eskimos or American natives, um, in the Alaskan region used to, when they got to a certain age, and they were no longer productive to their society, would go on an ice flow and chip away until they floated away. So they did not drain society. Um, certainly do no harm there, but, uh, and I read that. I don't know if it's true, but I, I read that. Any other ethic? What is the single most important thing to have in an ethical statement for SNET?
I guess one thing I think of is, uh, beyond a statement, I guess the biggest question I have is, how is that implemented? And who, who takes responsibility for that or oversees that process?
Yes, that was, uh, i- i- in a document, we discussed that. That was, uh, kind of like put off as part two. First, first, we felt we needed to come up with an ethical statement. And then was the, uh, it, it, and I'm a risk manager, was a risk manager, so ISIM has always been a management, uh, um, initials that I used, uh, identify, select, implement, and then monitor. So, so how do you monitor and, and what do you do about it? It's a big part of it. Um, but we decided in group, um, to not tackle that part until we could actually come up with a, a statement, recognizing that was, that was the other shoe, uh, that had to be answered. Um, so we, we didn't tackle it, Fly. Um, we, we, we didn't get to the ethical statement. So, we're working on it, and that's part of what this is. My, my thing is to always be nice. Must be nice to your colleague. Even if you disagree, your opinion is different. Be nice. Go ahead, Sukun, please.
Yeah, I would say it's, um, respect to others, to yourself, and then equity, irrespective of race, gender.
Could you talk a little bit more about what you mean by equity?
Yeah, equity is, um, simply fairness, fairness to, whatever we're going to do, we need to be fair to everyone, because we, we are all equals. So, um, in the, in the program, we're all equal, so everyone should be treated in the same manner.
I can, I can add into that, Sukun, and say, uh, perhaps, I mean, one can simply say equality, but it does not encompass, uh, what, uh, what we want as an outcome here. And, uh, because we are all equal in value as, uh, people in this, basically in this open source and, uh, kind of decentralized community. But in the same time, uh, we're not equal in terms of output, in terms of engagement, in terms of, uh, leadership roles, let's say. And that's where equity comes in, where, uh, some of us will have more privileges than others, uh, based on what they do as work. It's, yeah, that's where fairness and equity overall comes in.
Wow, powerful, powerful. Go ahead, please.
I was just gonna say basically that, great stuff, guys.
Two minutes, uh, to, to, to wrap up, um, for me, anyway. I, uh, others may be able to stay on longer, but I have a three o'clock hard stop here. Any last words on the beginning, the initiation of this, um, statement? Uh, terminology, opinions, emotions that you would like? opinions, emotions that you would like to have read into an ethics statement for SingularityNet? Okay, well, this was a great start. I thank everybody for participating. Remember, tomorrow in incubation, this is gonna and as Rojo observed, the aligning of two stars, Fly, and we did not have a conversation about this, but ethics is a topic that we're tackling. And apparently, the butterfly effect has occurred here. And it's going to step up tomorrow with Anna and with incubation. So take notes out of here, bring up, do what you love. I see Tevo has in there, do what you love in the chat. Love that. Love that. Do what you love. I almost missed that. Okay, and as John Lennon said, love the one you're with. So tomorrow, please join incubation. Join Strategy much earlier. Cardano Catalyst is in between. And let's, as a community, work on this thing that's so important to all of us, ethics. With that, I'm gonna leave. Rojo, keep on keeping on, and I'll keep that convo going for a bit.
Thank you, everyone, for joining. And see you soon.
Nice one.
Thanks, guys. Bye bye.
Bye bye.